Ladies and gentlemen, the national anthem. I want on behalf of the president to welcome and thank you for honoring our invitation to this encounter. For me, it is an honor and privilege to be with you tonight at this event. And I must express my profound gratitude to His Excellency the President for honoring me with this appointment as High Commissioner for Ghana to the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland. And in that position to welcome the President and his entourage to the United Kingdom. Mr. President, we are very grateful for you for taking off time of your busy schedule on this private visit to hold this town hall meeting with the Ghanaian community in the United Kingdom. A community I have not really designated, but I consider it to be the 11th region of our great republic. Because of the sheer numbers that we have. This demonstrates your care for the welfare of all Ghanaians, both women abroad. And it is also a further demonstration of your belief that the Ghanaian diaspora constitutes an important resource in contributing to achieving the transformation agenda that you have set for Ghana. Tonight's program will definitely afford the Ghanaian community in UK the opportunity to interact with the President for the first time since he assumed office in January of this year. And also for the President to brief the community on developments, particularly economic and social in our beloved country. It is expected that at this meeting, government's policy initiatives to get our country to a higher level of development will be highlighted together with the achievements and the challenges. Of course, the expected contribution of the Ghanaian diaspora to these efforts also will come from you. And of course, it's expected that any challenges that you're facing in this whole country will be brought to attention of us, President. As you may be aware, the government of Ghana is organizing a diaspora homecoming summit in Accra from the 5th to the 8th of July at the International Conference Centre. The media launch took place at the premises of the High Commission on the 5th of May. And this was followed by two roadshows held in London and Coventry. The ongoing TV and radio announcements to create further awareness of the summit and to encourage you to participate in it. I wish to entreat as many of you as can make it to attend the summit and share your experiences and talents for the development of our nation. I take this opportunity to thank members of the Diaspora Steering Committee in the United Kingdom for the good work they are doing in support of the National Diaspora Mobilization Committee's effort to host a successful summit. I'm aware, even though I've been here only since last Tuesday, of the strong cooperation between the High Commission and the Ghanaian community in the United Kingdom. As I assume office, my intention is to further strengthen this cooperation and project the name and image of Ghana as well as the interests of Ghanaians in the diaspora. We all have to contribute to the development of our country. And as High Commissioner, I intend to lead the agenda in this country for mobilizing the needed human and other resources for Ghana's development. As I've said repeatedly, I see myself as the Chief Marketing Officer for Corporate Ghana in the UK. And finally, I wish to thank all of you who have worked tirelessly to make this event possible. And I have no doubt that we will have a successful event. At this juncture, before I take my seat, I will introduce someone who needs no introduction. Someone who throughout his adult life has fought for the good of our country. Someone whom even as a law student in 1979, we saw as a role model. One of the most distinguished lawyers our country has ever had. And one whom I dare say has been well-prepared for this position, has believed in himself, has sacrificed his life in order to turn the fortunes of this country around. And I have no doubt that we are in exciting times under the leadership of Nana Ado Dankwa Akuparo, President of the Republic of Ghana.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's great to be here again and I'm really, really happy to be amongst you here. As you know, as you know, every time I come to London, I try to meet with you so that we can continue this conversation and dialogue about how we get our country going. But this time, I've come, there's no different my meeting you, I'm here in a new capacity. By the grace of the Almighty and the generosity of the Ghanaian people, I've come now as President of the Republic. So I have to thank you very, very much for this. I can only describe it as massive turnout. I thought that what I saw in Berlin last, I believe, Sunday was it in my tour. But ibidi ibiti. So, and that only reinforces the message the High Commissioner has given. Please take this homecoming summit in Accra seriously and participate as much as you can. We want out of it to have got some kind of roadmap as to how the community in Ghana and you can engage fruitfully for our mutual benefit. The first thing this occasion allows me to do is to express my personal gratitude and that of the party for the contribution many of you, both inside and outside our party, made towards the victory of 7th December 2016. And I've come here expressly to say to you, WhatsApp, messages on the telephone, and there's no substitute for feely-feely, man you, I see each other. So I've come here to say a very, very big thank you for your contribution to our victory of 7th December 2016. It's through our collective destiny, there's no doubt about the contribution you've made. We began also to try in the process of mobilizing all the talents of our country to call some of you back home to public service in Ghana. Not everybody can, but some can and some have already begun. More will come as things unfold. There are some basic things that I want to share with you. First of all, we put together a government in the fastest time in the history of the fourth republic. We have only a few left to complete the whole national, regional and local takeover of the state by our party and government. There are about 21 DCs that are still yet to be confirmed. Out of the 216, 195 of them are now in place of working. So in fact, the whole apparatus of the state now is firmly under our control in Ghana. The other important development that has taken place is the budget that was passed in March. It has received the title of the ASEMA budget because it is carrying so many positive things. People are surprised, and myself the most, that despite the very bleak financial situation we inherited, that people could be as clever as Ken Oforiata and be able to create create a path for progress and for our future prosperity. It's a piece of luck for me that somebody like him has come into my life to help me in the exercise that I am doing. What are the three or four most important things that this budget has sought to do? The critical one above all, because that is the analysis of the budget and that is the analysis that we have made, is that the stronger the Ghanaian private sector can be, the faster our development will be and the better we will be able to confront problems of unemployment and the rest. So whatever can be done to strengthen the Ghanaian private sector is what this budget has sought to do. First of all, by removing a whole lot of taxes that we ourselves call nuisance taxes for going over a billion cedis of revenue and keeping it in the hands of the private operators, all with the view of strengthening them and allowing them to expand and grow. The two key areas of growth of our economy, like in any economy elsewhere, industry and agriculture, have been specifically tackled by this budget. $100 million stimulus package has been found for the distressed industrial and manufacturing enterprises in the country. On top, the funding for the One District One Factory Initiative has also found resonance in the budget. Efforts are being made to reform both our tax system and the collection of due revenue at our ports. I'll come back to that because it's such a serious matter. More specifically to come back to it, but reforms are going on. In fact, the commitment we have made is that by September, transactions at our ports are now going to be paperless. That it'll all be electronic and therefore cut down the room for manipulation and for corruption. That is at the level of the industrial and manufacturing activity, the One District One Factory Initiative, but in agriculture, which has seen a systematic decline in these last five years. We've also brought a program which we've called Planting for Food and Jobs. The farming population of Ghana roughly is about 5 million farmers, farmers. This initial part of the program, the very first year of the program, has identified 200,000 farmers across the country who are, as it were, the pilot for the program. The idea is that by the end of the four-year mandate, we will have been able to roll out this program to cover two and a half million of the 5 million farmers of Ghana, at least 50%. And that should have a dramatic impact on the revival of our agriculture, on our food supply, on the growth of our cash crops and generally in terms of enhancing incomes of our farmers. What is the Planting for Food and Jobs? It consists basically of three items. We're putting to these 200,000 farmers imports, three kinds of imports. One, improved seedlings. We're talking about identifying maize, cassava, sorghum, soya. These are the principal objects of the Planting for Food and Jobs, improved seedlings in them. Again, we've reduced by half the cost of fertilizer to our farmers and policing their distribution that they really get to the farmers and we're not setting up parallel markets, black markets and distributing fertilizer and such. But most important is that for the first time in five years, the Ministry of Agriculture is able now to deploy extension officers in the field. It's an unbelievable fact, but it is true. The last five years, not a single graduate of the colleges of agriculture in Ghana has been employed in the public sector. So all of these people who have knowledge and skills that can help our farmers, apart from the handful that were able to find work in the private sector, are sitting at home wasting away. We have this year's budget employed 1,200 of them and sent them into the field. With a commitment that next year's budget will see to the employment of another 2,000. By then, hopefully, we would have finished with the arrears and then we can be up to date with the production that comes out of the colleges of agriculture. It is so critical in having these young men and women being able to assist our farmers in improving more modern methods of agriculture. It is very important for our future. We're taking these measures in the real economy and at the same time, we think it is important that the very base of our social system, social welfare system also should be addressed. I have for the last five, six years made a commitment that if the Almighty was to favor me, I was going to ensure the senior high school education in our country, in the public sector, was free to the parents and the children of our people. That commitment was made, not because it was a vote-winning instrument. This is what my opponents kept saying, "Oh, he's doing it just to get votes." And I kept saying, "It's got nothing to do with votes. It has everything to do with the development of our country." Because education is at the heart of the development of our country. By the grace of God and the wizardry of these men who have made our budget, in September this year, the free SHS policy will begin. Everybody who gains admission to the public sector senior high schools are going to go without having to pay for fees. So all of these parents who were burdened by fees and had in many cases to pull their children out of school, send them to work to maintain their family, can now feel some relief. Send their children to school and we all will be the beneficiaries. Again, a major commitment we made in the election was that we were going to see to the revival and regeneration of the National Health Insurance Scheme. The National Health Insurance Scheme was the great legacy Kufu left us, which made it possible for even the poorest in our society to have access to minimum decent quality healthcare without having to pay for it. Other than this tiny little amount of money you pay as a premium to have the card. It was being strangled, strangled by debt. The service providers were not being cared for. The bills and arrears were mounting and mounting and they were then beginning to insist that they'll have to go back to the cash and carry system. None of us want to go back to the cash and carry system in Ghana. We want the National Health Insurance Scheme to work. And so, the effort to clear the arrears has begun. And the minister has made a commitment that by the end of this year, he would have liquidated all the arrears he came to meet so that the health service can now become more functional, more vibrant and more vigorous. I received a lot of criticism at home. I'm used to it, you know that. I received a lot of criticism at home when I appointed the new Minister for Health. People rang me, "We don't appoint a doctor to be a Minister of Health." Those people said, "You had all these brilliant people in your party and everything and you go and appoint an accountant to be a health minister, not even a scientist." And I said, "The problem facing our health delivery system is not the quality of the professionals in it." Everybody knows that Ghanaian doctors, even working with the very difficult circumstances that they're having to do in our country today, are excellent in their work. Everybody also knows that we have very high-quality health professionals. That's why when they leave Ghana, it's so easy for them to get jobs wherever they go to. But the problem of our health delivery system is the financial deficit of the system, the difficulties it is putting money together to keep the system going. So I am going to appoint somebody who's good with figures, who's a brilliant economist and that person is going to see to it that we can put the National Health Insurance on its proper footing. And that's what we have done. And I'm so happy that I wasn't buffeted by these criticisms and that Kwakuajima Menue is on seat. There are two or three other things I want to say before I finish this briefing. First of all, the national identification system. We have made a commitment and we are going to fulfill it that by this year, at the end of this year, every single resident in our country will have a unique identification number, a national ID system. It's so important for so many, all the reasons that you know, the reason why we must have such a card issue. And on top of it, it would then enable us also to register you. Because when the domestic one is over, we will then also register the Ghanaian diaspora. And that obviously will facilitate a very important concern of yours, ROPA. The law allowing Ghanaians overseas to vote in Ghana's elections was passed by a government of which I was the member, Kufu's government. Unfortunately, those charged with the management of our electoral system and they are an independent body of people, as they should be. We don't want politicians, presidents and ministers being responsible for our electoral system. So the Constitution in its wisdom has given authority to a group, they call them the Electoral Commission, who have absolute independence to manage our electoral system for us. I agree with the reasoning of the Constitution. But it does therefore mean that in these matters, the implementation of electoral laws and regulations, we are there, mercy. So Dr. Afarajan told us when we passed the law that he was not yet ready to be able to implement it. Once he said that, everybody put their hands behind their back and said, "Yo, yes, sir, we hear you." His successor has come and initially she made the same statement. "I've engaged, I'm saying, 'I cannot understand why Senegalese and Malians and Guineans and Togolese can vote in elections outside and Ghanaians cannot do so. I don't understand that at all.'" So, madam, let's all begin to see how this can be done. Well, all kinds of processes are going on. Some people have even brought a case to court to insist that the next election, the law should be applied. And I hear that the High Court has ordered the Electoral Commission to come and show them what steps they're taking towards implementing that law. It's an important step. I'm happy the High Court has taken that action. But we also want to hear from you. You should raise your voice. Let's all speak so that the Electoral Commission will hear loud and clear that we believe that the next election, this law should be working so that everybody here can also participate in deciding who is the... so that everybody here can also participate in deciding who is elected. So that process has begun, the registration. And the other matter is about the fight against corruption in our country. We made a commitment that we would establish an office of special prosecutor who will have the mandate to investigate and prosecute acts of corruption in the public service. We made that commitment because public opinion in Ghana had ceased to have confidence in the Attorney General being a political officer to be able to manage such investigations and prosecutions. So we committed ourselves to establish an office of special prosecutor, an office that will be independent of the executive, whose prosecutor will have security of tenure. The office is going to be established by Act of Parliament and he will have the remit to investigate and prosecute acts of corruption. This meeting of Parliament that has begun, God willing, will see the law passed in this meeting. And within three months, later six months, the office itself will be up and running and then we can have the capacity to do it. The reason why this is such an important matter for us is because of the project that we have put before our people. We want to put Ghana in a situation beyond aid. That's what we're saying. We want to be able to mobilize Ghana's own resources to handle the problems of its development. We are not a poor country. We're a country of considerable resources. 27 million people, hard-working people, in a land which is blessed with a lot that nature has given us. If we handle the resources of our country honestly and intelligently, my goodness, there is no limit to where we cannot go to in Ghana. Three weeks ago, the law enforcement agencies cracked a syndicate that was operating in the harbour in Tema. Nineteen customs officials in league with representatives of three clearing agencies, freight forward agencies, were responsible, allegedly. I say allegedly because they have not been brought before court yet. This is the allegation that has been made, that 1.2 billion CDs have been diverted by them over a limited period of time. If you look at the whole structure of the ports of our country, that a handful of them can be responsible for this level of loss. Put it all together and you can imagine the leakages and the seepages that there are out of our system. In the budget expenditure for 2016, in the budget expenditure for 2016, 53 billion CDs, 3.8 billion CDs, was the contribution of official donor assistance, that is concessionary loans and grants, i.e. 7.2% of our budget is financed by overseas taxpayers. You break it down and the facts are even more scary. The health budget, 2.9 billion CDs, 743 million of it, i.e. 26% is financed by overseas donor assistance. Essentially, it means the taxpayers of England, of France, of Germany, America, etc. Education, the budget, 5.9 billion CDs, 323 million is financed by overseas official donor assistance, i.e. 5.4%. And then the gender and social protection ministry, 463 million was the budgeted expenditure for 2016. 70 million of it was overseas aid, 15.25%. So in this, our social sector, health, education and gender, budget of 9.2 billion, 1.1, 1.2 billion is overseas aid, 12.32%. And one group of racketeers in our ports can deny us revenue of 1.2 billion CDs. So the fight against corruption is about ourselves. It is not so a big theoretical thing in the air. They are derailing our capacity to control our own development and to be able to do so with our heads high and not with our hands out begging people to come and help us. We should not be in that position in Ghana. We appreciate the contributions and the support that our friends across the world have made to our country and to its development. Not looking gift horses in the mouth, but we should be capable of financing our own development so that whatever anybody else wants to come and give us is like a bonus, is the icing on the cake. And these statistics I have brought out tell you how important the fight against corruption is. If it is indeed true that the leakages can be anything between 7 to 10 billion CDs, then you can see the whole magnitude of where we are. Those who are pocketing these sums of money and denying these monies to our exchequer, essentially are denying our capacity to develop ourselves. We shouldn't allow that to continue to happen. We shouldn't. And all I can say is that to the extent that I have health and strength and God gives me, I am going to do my best to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore. So, that's where we are. I know there are a lot of things that you want to find out. I'm happy there are people here who can help answer some of the issues. For me, the future is bright. The future is bright. The possibilities of Ghana are endless. It was not for nothing that we were the first of the African peoples to become free. I've had a history of organized agitation in our country for over a century. And that today, we are the beacon, the symbol of stability and democracy in the whole of the African continent. We're going to leverage all of this to build ourselves a bright future, a prosperous future, where the mass of our people will begin to live in dignity and prosperity. We can do it. We can do it. We can do it. So thank you and may God bless us and may God bless Ghana and make our nation greater still. Thank you.